Council meeting for. Maybe we have. Oh, there she is. Ms. Adams is not here tonight, so Maria, will you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Rick Mueller.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Rachel Gray.
Present.
Councilmember William Benning.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Angelica Landry.
Present.
Councilmember Carolyn Umfree.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. As you folks in here might have noticed, we had a voice from the heavens come out. Ms. Landry is attending the meeting electronically. Unfortunately, she was in the hospital recently, and she's home recovering, and we're glad she's recovering, and we're glad you could be with us tonight, Dr. Landry. We appreciate your efforts and hope that you'll be here in spirit and in body next time. Okay, next we'll go to the invocation tonight. The invocation will be led by Pastor Becky Priest, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Gray. Please rise.
Father, we pray for this city council meeting. I ask you to anoint each person in leadership for them to be able to make the best decisions for our city. I pray for those who are attending this meeting that they would have wisdom to know how to make their requests known so that the right things can be done. I ask you to heal our land. According to 2 Chronicles 7:14, "If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land." Father, as we walk in love with everyone, whether we agree with them or not, help us to be bold and have unwavering faith, always seeking You first in a spirit of faith. Help us to maintain our joy in the Lord, which is our strength. Help us to fear not, only believe because nothing is impossible with God. In the powerful name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Please join me in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated, and thank you, Pastor Priest, from the Hope and Healing Christian Church. We appreciate you being here once again. The first item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Ms. Umfree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the agenda for the regular city council meeting of June 10, 2021 be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additions or corrections on the agenda? In that case, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Is it unanimous, Ms. Dr. Landry?
She said aye.
Aye, okay. I didn't hear it, I guess.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So it's unanimous. We now go to the city manager's report. Mr. Petuchek.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller, members of the council. Next week begins your budget work session schedule, and that starts Monday, the 14th at 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, and that will be for the purpose of going over the budget, and you'll get an overview presentation and be able to start asking questions. And then, if necessary, on the 15th and 16th, budget work sessions are scheduled also for 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. On the 22nd, you have your normal work session and updates, and that's also at 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. A few items tonight. The rebid on the North Garden Avenue Fry Boulevard Phase 1 project was posted on May 26, and that is due on Monday, so hopefully by the time the council meets, we'll have some news on that. And then, the airport entrance sign proposals were opened on June 9, and High Desert Signs was the successful vendor of 32,000, so that was actually under budget for a change.
Yeah, there you go. I guess it's good to go with a local vendor, huh?
So that's a good thing. Only that would happen on some of the other ones. And then, finally, the JPA Board for CCOM met this morning for the purpose of interviews for the executive director position, or director's position, I should say, and voted to begin contract negotiations with the successful applicant. And once those negotiations are complete and we sign a contract, we'll be able to announce who that is. So that's where we're at right now.
And thank you, Mr. Petuchek. Before I open up for everybody else for questions, I know we've got budget meeting scheduled next week. We have a new councilperson that's coming onboard tonight who hasn't been privy to all the other discussions, so I just hope staff has a plan to make sure that before we do the final vote, that we've taken all opportunities to make sure that the new council member is as much up to speed as possible on the budget.
We will make ourselves available.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you hear? Did you hear that? I can't see. Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Petuchek on this report?
Yes, I mean, the airport sign, did you say when we would look at when that would be installed? Or that's just for making it, or?
No, that would be installed.
And the install, and when would we?
No, Mr. Boone was running that one for us.
Sorry.
I don't have that information.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Umfree, the short answer is I don't know yet. The bid was in. We've received it, and Ms. Kenny Downing is making the contract for that. And then we'll have the follow-on meeting to confirm the design and the timeline.
And is there a place we can view the design, what it ended up looking like?
I mean, I can distribute it. I actually included it in the executive report submission, but I can ship it over.
Oh, so if I'm just patient, I'll see it? Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
You have to see it right away.
No, no, I can wait.
I know some things are more important than others. Okay. Thank you, Tony. Anything, any other questions for the city manager on the report? Thank you, Mr. Petuchek. We'll now go to item number two. Mr. Benning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the consent agenda consisting of the special city council meeting minutes of May 27, 2021, and regular city council meeting minutes of May 27, 2001 be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, corrections for the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to new business. Item number three. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2021-041, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Sierra Vista, the Cochise County Sheriff's Office, and the Cochise County Community College District to operate the southeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy on the Cochise College Douglas Campus be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Chief Thrasher, may we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The resolution before you is authorization to proceed with the IGA to operate the academy down at the Cochise College campus. This is a renewal of the agreements that we've signed the last couple of years. This authorizes the service police department to provide recruit training officer at the academy and to receive payment up to $11,800 in overtime from the college for that officer's time while they're serving at the academy, as well as using the defensive tactics room and the airport, possibly the airport for drivers' training for the academy. So this allows us to participate and receive that overtime from the college. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Thrasher? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to item number four. Mrs. Umfree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2021-042, annual equipment financing and declaring an emergency be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Felix, may we have the staff report, please?
Mayor, members of council, this is our annual equipment financing that we usually do at this time of the year. This year, we're just financing two refuse trucks, more so for the cash flow situation in the refuse fund. You guys have passed a rate increase last year. It is still working its way through, but this way we can keep some cash in the fund and have the fund not go cash negative. We did receive one bid, however, that bid was 1.32%, which is a phenomenal rate. It doesn't even match, that's even lower than the rate of inflation, so it's quite a good deal to get. It is awarded to Bank Funding LLC. It is a bank-qualified lease for their purposes, so it's a financial advantage to them. It's an IRS code that allows banks to give loans to cities and municipalities for small lenders like this and gives them tax benefits as well, so it's a beneficial thing for both of us. The emergency clause is because you do not get a 30-day interest rate lock, and normally a resolution will take 30 days to go into effect. This way, that can go into effect immediately, and we can start tomorrow on the paperwork. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I just mentioned that it's actually by law that normally a 30-day.
Yeah.
Doesn't go into effect for 30 days in Arizona. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Felix?
No.
Okay, seeing no questions or discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, 6-0. Thank you very much. We now move on to item number five. Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2021-043, accepting the resignation of Patricia N. Olson with regret and appointing Daniel Coxworth to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Said term to expire December 31, 2021 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have.
Sure.
I would say staff report for the appointment report.
Sure. So Ms. Olson had to resign from P&amp;Z early due to personal reasons, and we went out for and advertised for applications. Mr. Coxworth applied and is very, what's the word I'm looking for, eligible to be on the planning and zoning and very experienced, so we're happy to recommend him for appointment.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments on the appointment? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now go to the event we're all here for tonight. Item number six. Mr. Johnson.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor, to present this resolution. I move that Resolution 2021-044, appointment of Mark A. Rodriguez to the city council. Said term to expire December 31, 2022 be approved.
A second. It's been approved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just thank you to. For his application.
Yeah, we want to thank you for all, everybody's application, and I want to say we had a number of folks that applied, some very good folks. We had four solid interviews, so it was a very tough competition, and we have to reach a consensus before we put the name forward. And obviously, the consensus was Mr. Rodriguez, so I'll congratulate you prematurely, and then we'll go ahead and vote. If nobody has anything else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, and congratulations. And Councilman Rodriguez will be sworn in after the meeting is concluded tonight, so thank you very much. We next go to a call to the public. Is there anyone that wishes to address us on call to the public tonight? I didn't have any forums. Okay, so we'll close the meeting to the public, and we go to comments and requests to council. And tonight, we start with Mrs. Landry. Dr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Rodriguez, and I look forward to working with him on council. I also wanted to give a shout out to everybody who came together and made the summit challenges a success, everybody that worked really hard before, during, and after the event. I participated in that, and all of the trails were well-marked. There were people that went up the day before and stayed the night to make sure that all the participants were, you know, taken care of, and they were there for them. The people that gave out the stamps and the stickers, they actually had to hike up there to be there all day long, so that was amazing for them to do that. I really appreciated it. It was a really great event. I look forward to the next year, as well as the events coming up in the future. And then I also wanted to thank everybody who made it possible for me to be able to participate in the meetings this week and be able to join from afar. I really appreciate that, and thank you for your help with that. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And we appreciate your extra effort in participating too, because I think we all know from experience that sometimes it can be very difficult when we have an ailment, so thank you. Next up would be Ms. Umfree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate and welcome, well, I know we can't welcome him yet, but Mark Rodriguez and all the people who applied. We had, we were in a very fortunate position to, it was not easy. There were so many good applicants, and I hope to see all of them involved in some way in the future. And I want to thank Dan Coxworth for joining the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I also want to mention, this past Saturday, the city had the honor of hosting a ceremony recognizing Nacho Venezuela for his probably decades of work to preserve and restore the Fry Cemetery on 7th. And Representative Ann Kirkpatrick came and presented a certificate of congressional recognition to him, and it was a beautiful ceremony. Our new curator for the museum, Elizabeth, help me with the name.
Rosick.
Rosick? Okay. Thank you.
I like his tone.
She did, yeah, that's why I can't do it. She did a great job, her and her staff. It was beautiful. And Greg was there, the mayor, and so it was a lovely ceremony. And Angelica, I'm so grateful to you as well for you being there during our interviews. I know it wasn't easy, but I really appreciate all the extra effort you put in to do that, and I hope we see you soon. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Umfree. Well, next go to Mr. Benning. Mr. Benning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome Father Greg. It's always a pleasure, always a blessing when he joins us. I'll get to Councilmember Mark in a minute. Councilmember Landry, it's great that you went, came through surgery. You're overcoming your sickness or your illness. Look forward to getting you back. The seat over here is getting a little cold, so we need you to come back with your pepperoni. And I'd like to comment on the whole process like everyone else has so far. The selection process was fun, to say the least. We had amazing applicants, all 22 of them, from the beginning, narrowing it down, and then selecting the final candidate or the council member. It was a good process. I think we all came together. We all talked freely. We shared what was on our mind, and I appreciate the process. I think we did a good job. With that said, I'd like to welcome Councilman Mark Rodriguez. I think he's going to do a good job finishing out the term, and I look forward to him running again. And for everyone else, like Councilwoman Umfree said, I hope everyone else stays involved with the city or gets involved more with the city. And with that said, be blessed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Benning. Mr. Johnson.
Well, I, you guys have stolen my thunder already. But I would like to welcome Mark. You're going to sit right here, buddy.
Good luck with that.
Dacked up. I can't kick you under the table, though. But welcome to city council. We look forward to working with you. I have only one other thing, and Flag Day is on Monday, the 14th. However, we're doing a Flag Day ceremony at the Elk Club Ramada. I think the scouts are usually involved in that. We didn't have one last year. And that will be Sunday, June 13 at 2:00 p.m., and the ceremony usually takes about an hour, and then there will be a barbecue immediately following that's free to all veterans. So I just want to make that announcement.
And I'll see you there with my proclamation in hand.
There you go.
There we go.
We'll see you then. All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to simply say welcome to Mr. Rodriguez, and I look forward to working with you. So, and thank you for your willingness to take this crazy journey. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. I do have a couple of things, and the first couple are kind of serious. We got a letter from the Forest Service, the chief of the local Forest Service this week, and she basically said they're suspending any use of firearms within the forests on the east side of the Wachukas. And the reason for that is because it's so dry up there. They're afraid that even a ricochet bullet with a spark could set things off. And I would tell you, just from my experience, she's probably right, because when you look at the Wachuka Mountains, you come down about an eighth of the altitude there, and you'll see some yellowing and brown patches. And that's where the Aspen fire was, was it 35, 40 years ago? And the Aspens are already in stress high up on the mountain, which is highly unusual. So that tells me as a civic leader, I need to remind you that we do not do things like throwing out lit cigarettes or trash or anything else. When we pull over our cars off the road, we need to make sure we park them so that our catalytic converter doesn't catch the grass, all those normal, dry, fire season stuff that we would do a little later in the year, we need to be very aware of. If we are hiking and camping in the mountains, we need to obviously be on guard against fire. We all remember our Monument Fire and what we went through. We don't want to go through that again as a community. And to stay on the fire, the Salvation Army put out a statement today that they're accepting donations for the Telegraph Fire, which is, if you've been watching the news, is a big fire in north central Arizona that's taken a number of acres that's not yet under control. And having gone through the Monument Fire, we know that the Salvation Army, who came in and basically fed people for a couple of weeks at the high school, they need funds to be able to do that, continue to do that up in that area as well. So if you're able to help out and provide funds for the Salvation Army so they can spend it on food and other things that the folks up there need, please contact the Salvation Army and make a donation. The next serious thing is, I want to talk about what's called suspicious vehicles. We had a kind of an increase on causes suspicious vehicles. So you say, well, what does that have to do with the price of tea? One thing that has happened in the longer past is we would have people come in with a vehicle, whether it's a van or a pickup truck with a shelter on the back, or a large truck, and park them. And as the people from the south who bring in drugs and other things would come, they would bring all their drugs or their people that were carrying the drugs, get into these vehicles, and immediately go to Phoenix. So what I would ask people, if you see a truck or a vehicle that's not usual, that's parked in an area primarily between the city and the mountains, or the city and the areas to the middle and south, that is unusual and you don't normally see it parked that day, that way, on your regular routine, please call the Sierra Vista Police Department if it's in town, and please call the sheriff's department and say you want to report a suspicious vehicle. What I don't want you to do is stop and check it out, because you don't know who's hiding in the bushes. You don't know who has weapons. And it's been known in the past, and it's happening now, that the cartels do, in fact, contact people in the greater Phoenix area and say, hey, you want to make a couple hundred bucks? Just drive down and carry a load back for us, and we'll give you a couple hundred bucks. So please be careful. We've been very lucky so far with this border crisis on the impacts on our community. But what we don't want to do is do something or allow criminal elements to abuse the good people, the pobrecitos that are coming across, or convey drugs and other contraband into our state. So if you see something, I'm just asking you to report it. You don't need to do the investigation. That's why we pay Chief Thrasher the big bucks, okay? So we appreciate your help. Now firstly, another good note. On Monday, the 14th, Vinnie's Pizza is going to offer 25% of their proceeds will be going to the fireworks. So if you like the fireworks on the Fourth of July, I would recommend that you go have lunch, go have dinner, do a takeout. They have great pizza, pasta, dinners, salads, sodas, and even some adult beverages there as well. But it's a great community place. They've been doing this for the years. And if you know, they're also involved in a number of things, another number of charities at the high school and Tippecop and a few other things. It helps with Special Olympics. So Vinnie's is a great institution in Sierra Vista, so I would encourage you to, if you're hungry and you've got a few coins in your pocket on Monday, to go see Vinnie's and get something good to eat and help support a great community event. With that, I have nothing else on the agenda. Seeing no comments, further comments from the council? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight.